Fifty-eight. Alan. Crazy, fellas. Hey, Stu.
Hey, how are you?
Good. Hey, Mikey. Eddie.
What's going on?
How's it going?
I'll follow it out.
Didn't end up working all day Saturday between my niece and nephew's house to help them get their generators online. That was great.
And it was cold. I haven't seen that in thirty, forty years.
It was, you see Mount Washington?
Yeah.
They broke a record, it was like minus one hundred.
Yeah, it's always cold there. I've heard of people dying in August up there. You get the sudden.
Little girl died not long ago on Lafayette, I think. Like, beginning of the winter. End of the fall. Hold on, Al. Hold on. Trying to find our. Oh, gosh. Trying to find your agenda. Well, I'm assuming what's next on the agenda is, there's a call, so we've got enough for a quorum. What's next on your agenda?
Um, discussion of future projects. I only, I think I only got two things on the agenda. Besides, you know, the adjournment.
Sure.
Call to order, whatever it is. So this is.
Let's talk about future projects.
So what I really wanted to do here is, um, talk about all of the things that need to be done and, uh, sort of get, get some advice, uh, potentially if anybody has it, uh, about each thing and I would like to also sort of get your approval to get started on these things, um. These things are gonna cost us money. You know, and I don't, I don't wanna go out and spend all this money sort of without, um, having your guys, uh, support on this stuff. So, uh, the first thing that, um, this, this one's a necessity, it really, it has to be done, is the Hall's Pond ropes. I don't know if I mentioned that uh, during the last meeting. Um, all those ropes that we used, um, were really, really poor condition. Um, they needed, they, they've probably needed to be replaced for ten to fifteen years. Uh, that's coming directly from, um, Alan from the fire department who puts the ropes in. And they had frayed. It's a special kind of rope, too, and it frays, and when it frays, uh, you can easily get like splinters. They're like rope splinters. It's weird. I got a bunch of them when I was trying to pull it out of the water with them, um. So, to make sure that, uh, we didn't reuse them again another year, uh, we actually cut the rope apart to make sure that we got new ones. Uh, also, it was the easiest way to remove them from, uh, the pond, so I'm gonna go get new ropes there. Um, there's a few different options. Um, I could order a specific, uh, length of the, of the rope. Or I could order it on a gigantic spool. Um, either way, the floats have to be connected to the rope. Uh, Alan's gonna do that for us next season. Um, the spool is, uh, it's probably gonna be cheaper to get the spool. And we might even be able to buy some, uh, or have it for the next time it's needed as well. So what are your thoughts on that?
How many feet on the spool?
That I don't know.
The price. I think I would get what you need because if it sits around for ten years, it's, even if you keep it out of the sunlight, it's probably gonna turn to crap.
Yeah, that's why I was asking how much, because if it's, if it's five changes worth, we don't really wanna have that hanging.
Right.
Okay. So get, I guess, the, the concern on that is, you know, if I, if I don't order enough, you know, like, that's one of those things where, like, I'm not really sure how, you know, how, how much it needs to be, um, aside from going in there and measuring it out in the water, you know?
Do you have idea how deep?
Wait, what?
You have no idea how much you need?
Not really, plus it, um, I don't know, I guess I could ask Alan and see what he thinks. Um, you'd probably have a good guesstimate, you know? But if it's.
It's gotta, it's gotta be the width. But it's the width of the waterfront times two, and then the depth, right? It's just a big, it's three sides.
Yeah, but it also, you don't really know how far it goes out either, you know? Like approximately, um.
Is there a typical lifespan for that rope?
I don't know, but he told me that as long as he's been doing that job and putting the rope in for the, for the town, he's like, it, it, it needed to be replaced the entire time. You know, it's just kinda, we just kept using it over and over and over and over again. I'll talk to him.
Alan, just, just to make it clear, everything we're talking about is money from your fund, right?
Um, it would be up until the point where, like, some of these things would go under the maintenance. You know, like the next thing I wanna talk about, um, we can't just go right into using the fund balance. We have to sort of use the budget, the budgeted money first, and then if we go past it, that's when we go into the fund balance.
So the rope is part of maintenance, your regular budget?
Well, I think it's gonna be more than that, so this is probably one of those things that would, would go into that, but again, that's, it's not just one, one thing, it's, it's everything on, on the list.
So like. How much is our line item for maintenance?
At the pond?
No, I mean, maintenance, we have a line item for maintenance.
There's ma- there's maintenance line items at every site. Uh, let me see what's here.
But it's gonna exceed that.
It, likely, so all of the things that, that need to be done, I don't know, I don't have the, the expense here, uh, I only have the revenue. I think the Hall's Pond, um, budget is like three thousand dollars. Um, for, for expenses. Could be wrong, that's the number that's popping into my mind right now. But, you know, even if we went over three thousand, like, let's just say the spool costs five thousand dollars. Just because we went over on the Hall Pond line item, again, doesn't mean that it's gonna directly come out of the fund balance. So we have to go down the entire budget and have everything go over the budgeted amount in order to tap into the fund balance. Make sense? Yeah. So, um, like I said, that, that one needs to get done for sure. Um, I'll ask, I'll ask Alan and see what his guess would be for how much we would need. Um, and who knows, maybe, maybe there's different sized spools, too, you know?
Yeah, that would be a good question to ask.
Cause he'd probably have a guesstimate on that. So that one really is, uh, I just wanted to let you guys know, I'm, I'm gonna go forward with this, um, probably when basketball's up, I'm gonna start. Get all this stuff done. Hall's Pond scene. I don't know if anyone's seen Hall's Pond. The beach, the beach area, obviously, um, it doesn't look very pleasant. Uh, I, so I asked, um, Troy about it, and he said, I, like, two years ago, they brought in one or two truckloads of sand, but it's, it's insignificant, you know, it's, it's, you can't, you can barely even tell, you know? I saw a picture on the computer and the place looked, looked beautiful, you know? Huge beach, it went back far, um, I'm thinking, uh, that I'd like it to look a lot better than it currently does. So he was saying that, that sort of sand that you need is a special sand, and it doesn't go very far. So he was saying, like, two truckloads is, it's really not that much. So I kinda was thinking, this might be one of those things that we, we do it and we do the job right. You know, get it, get that place looking sharp again, and that, that could be, you know, partial, partially the reason why not as many people go anymore. You know, if it doesn't, if it's not inviting, you know? So.
If, if you order truckloads of sand, I don't know how many yards that is, but you order X amount of yards, who spreads it? Public Works?
Yeah, he, he said if they went and they got it, even if they got it now, um, they could dump it, and they wouldn't, they might not spread it now, but it would be there. And then they would come in with one of their, I don't know, he said a skid steer or something else, and they could, they could spread it.
Little bucket loader. Cool.
So what do you guys think about that? Do you, you think that's one of those things that we should invest in and get that place looking nice again, and?
Yeah, every, every so often, we're gonna have to make these things right.
Yeah. You know, it's, the best way to say it, in my mind, is like, a lot of these, a lot of these things have kind of been patchwork, you know, it's like, they deteriorate, deteriorate, and even if you throw in a bucket of sand, you know, or a truckload of sand, it's still never gonna replace the deteriorating roof, you know, if you go all in.
I think that's a good one.
Okay. Okay, um, I'm not sure if I brought this one up, uh, before. The baseball, uh, field at the TOB, the, the main complaint from the men's baseball team that plays there is that the foul balls go into the woods. Uh, they lose, you know, a handful every time over there, whether it be like a practice or a game. And apparently the balls are kind of expensive, they're like fifteen bucks a pop. And they're not allowed to go onto the neighbor's property to retrieve the balls. So what he said, uh, he, me being, uh, to the advantage, he said they would like to have, uh, the fence part. What's the best way to say, I don't know, just more added to the fence to give it like a top layer to stop the foul balls from going into the woods. You know, I guess, instead of being vertical, it would be, yeah, it would be angled, yeah. And I noticed, uh, a couple of fields have that, I think even, um, center school field has that. Again, this is one of those things that, you know, if it was there, maybe more teams come in and use the field, you know? If nobody wants to come in and lose ten balls, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna cost them a hundred bucks every time they wanna go play there, you know?
Yeah, I, that's a good idea, so you get the fence guy to give you a price.
The fence guy that I tried to, to contact before, when we had that vandalism at the park, um, he never got the message. I reached out so many times, uh, does anybody, a different fence company?
Who did you use? Alan.
A guy in Holland, whoever.
Ken, Ken Fencing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's who we used years ago, so I, he's not, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, we had, uh, Halloween two years ago, we had somebody come in and knock over a panel of the fence. And, um, I tried call, email, I actually drove there, too, and not, nobody was there, so I'm not, I'm not sure what's up with, with that company, but.
Hit the, hit the internet, look up some local fence people and see what you can get.
Okay, so we think this is a good.
I don't know anybody.
Go forward with that?
Well, we can price it out anyway.
Okay. Okay. Um, all right. These, these two, um, these are, these are kinda like the sand, uh, the two batting cages that we have, one at Town Office Building and one at River Road. Um, I think they need new, uh, new rocks there. That's like the base, the, what's on the ground is the, the rocks. Um, we've lost a bunch of the rocks there, so it, it doesn't look good at all. You know, that, and it's not, it's one of those things where, um, it's kind of being held down makeshift style, you know, uh, they have like car parts there holding down the, uh, the netting and stuff like that, axles, and it, it just, it, it's not a good look, and that one, to me, I think would be a, uh, an easy, quick fix, you know, get some new rocks in there, some new gravel, make it look nice. Clean up the, uh, the car parts, the engine blocks and all that stuff, and, uh, you know? Thoughts on that one?
Have we seen anybody use those nets?
Um, I've never seen anyone use them. Uh, the hall school coach told me that they used it um, at the one at the TOB, and he actually, uh, he used funding that he got to buy a new one, like, new netting for it. So he says he has that, uh, I'm assuming he's gonna wanna put it up uh, in the, you know, before the next season comes along. So that's, I mean, if he's gonna replace the netting, cause that netting is torn to shreds. Uh, if he's gonna replace that, you know, I think we could, we could put down new rocks for it.
Just hope baseball makes a resurgence in the next little while. I'm sure it will.
You know, I, I don't, that's not even a big one, you know, like, the, the Hall's Pond sand, that's gonna require a lot of sand. This one is probably gonna be, you know, one or two truckloads of rock, and it would be good enough to, to fix it. Okay, okay, okay. What about a shed at the TOB field? Remember how we were having, um, issues down there, and we wanted to have some tools at the ready so people could sort of fix their damage after a game and stuff? At least there used to be a shed down there, but it's totally destroyed. Uh, what do you think about maybe getting a new one to replace it?
When you say shed, you mean like one of those little plastic lockers?
Sorta, yeah.
That's what happened to the last one, it was plastic, and it didn't, like a Rubbermaid, it didn't hold up.
I have a Rubbermaid shed at my house, it's lasted four years, it's in good shape. But it's a bigger.
You don't have a bunch of, you don't have a bunch of thugs at your house beating on it.
I mean, the only alternative is to just leave the tools in the dugout, which is what we did. Um, I mean, it's, it's whatever you guys think on that.
Well, we, we used to, when we had Little League before, we had that shed up above behind the concession stand where we would keep our tools.
So the problem is, like, there's tools in that shed, but, you know, I have, I have a key for it. You know, who else has a key for it? You know, it's like, I don't want everybody to have a key to go into the shed to get in there, you know?
So, you were talking about to hang, you know, a couple of shovels and a couple of rakes?
Yeah, shovels, rakes, a bucket. You know, um, that sort of stuff.
We hire somebody just to build like a little, you know, like that thing that you built on the concession stand at River Road, where you keep, uh, balls and bats and stuff like that? You know what I'm talking about, at River Road?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Built a little closet for community, built something like that on that shed up on the hill. Put a padlock, not a padlock, but a combo lock on it. And give Tony the combo and whoever else rents.
Okay.
Instead of, you know, instead of having something down on the field.
You think that would be, uh, cheaper, like?
I think it's less likely to get ruined.
Might last longer.
Right.
Actually, I'm thinking, why not just put it on the end of the dugout? You know?
Might work, too, I was wondering that.
That way it's right there at the field, you know?
Oh, yeah, right, you got a concrete dugout.
Yeah, I think people would be more likely to fix their stuff if they don't have to walk as far to grab the, the equipment, you know? Okay, but that's a good idea, though, so look into having one built, like.
Whatever you do, attach it to something so it's permanent.
It would be three side, that's all.
So do we think that's a good idea? Is that worth pursuing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, here's the big, big one. Um, the infield groomer. We all remember the infield groomer stories with the landscaper and all that, and we were talking about getting one, uh, for ourselves. And, uh, that way we can, we could actually do it when we wanna have it done and not have to rely on, you know, anybody to do it, and if Hall School wants to come over and have a game, we do it right before the game, you know? And when the, when the baseball league wants to do it right before the game, Tony can run it right before the game. You know, and not only that, we could bring it to all the fields, you know, to, cause that's, that's the thing, is it, in order to maintain the field, it needs to be done regularly. You know, once a month, does, that doesn't even cut it, and that's what we have on the, you know, on the bid.
So you pull that out of your bid, or pull that out of your maintenance contract, and then who does it? It's you, or whoever? You have a lot of hands on that thing.
Probably be me, but, um, me and Tony, I'm guessing. So this is obviously the biggest thing on the list, so I looked into this a little bit. Um, you can get one used for around two thousand dollars. Um, I don't know, it's, it's just kind of my opinion, but I think you're kind of, um, risking, risking a lot when you buy used stuff like that. You know, I mean, you could get it, and then the engine could die right after, you know, and then the other thing is, even if it, if it's not something big, if it's small things that need to be repaired, I'm not qualified to do that. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know how to fix engines and stuff like that, so.
What's a new one cost?
The ones that I saw, um, were about nine thousand. So obviously, that's a big chunk of money, but we do have money as well.
Do we get the money?
Where will we get the money?
Yeah.
That, that would be something that would come out of the fund balance. You know, when it's all said and done, cause it's just such a large amount of money. You know, I, I'm assuming we would go over our regular budget for that.
Do we have X amount of money in the fund balance? Don't have to share what it is, it's a pretty good number, but the key is, what do you guys all think we should keep in the fund balance once we spend money? Ten K? As a cushion?
How much is the fund right now?
So it's, um, I'll give you the overall number, but then I'm gonna break it down. Uh, the overall amount in there right now is fifty-five thousand. But it's not, it's not a true number, because thirteen thousand of that is from the Lions crib, so that money was designated to go for a scoreboard. So that's why, you know, it, it's not really included. Uh, then there's, there's a, uh, I think there's a little bit under a thousand dollars in there for scholarships. So that carries over, but that's not really fund balance money either. You know, that's specifically used for families that come to me and say, we wanna play basketball, but we, we can't afford it, can we, can we get in there, you know? So that's not a true number either, you know, I don't wanna.
So you got at least thirty-five or forty.
Yeah, that's, that's the good number, but then there's, there's, uh, something else as well. I have two thousand dollars in there that was given to my, um, Steven, I'm trying to think of his last name, Davis, for that bench, the, the bench project we were doing. So I bought the bench, um, I'm waiting on the plaque now, you know, but that's another thousand dollars that is included in the number. But it shouldn't really be included in the number, so there's a lot of things that are skewing it, you know, to make it seem like it's more than it is.
To put, just to put a number on it, like Mikey said, you're probably around thirty-five K, not counting that stuff.
Thirty, probably thirty-three, thirty-three I would go with.
All right, I think Maureen, you know, Maureen usually floated between fifteen and twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars depending. But what should we keep in the fund? You know, if we spend everything that you have in the general, in that fund balance, we have nothing, and something breaks somewhere. We don't wanna not have a cushion. I think it'd be good if we all decided right now, what would it be great to keep in there? Do you wanna spend everything, or keep a cushion?
What do you see as potential risks where you might need emergency money?
Sure.
I think the, the, the biggest concern on my end is Hall's Pond. Uh, Hall's Pond loses around six thousand dollars minimum every year, just because the amount, the, the lifeguards cost a ton of money, and we really only make like two thousand dollars tops from, from residents to go swimming. You know?
Do you make that up with the fund balance?
Well, yeah, that's where it would come from, so any losses would come from the fund balance as well.
Right. So that's six thousand dollars a year, that you're in the negative?
Yeah, usually, I mean, it's been higher, you know what I mean? Uh, the year before that, I think it was eight thousand.
So what's our biggest moneymaker?
Basketball's the biggest moneymaker. But again, you know, like, even that's, even that's down, you know, I was trying to.
But does, does that, does that easily, does that easily offset the loss at Hall's Pond?
No, and especially not, uh, last season or this season, because I had to buy new, um, shirts and jerseys. You know, I bought, I went, I bought new jerseys this year, and that cost eighteen hundred dollars, you know? Those, these are, you know, things that, that ha- we have to have them, right? And, you know, it just goes like ten years, go down the line, and, and the jerseys are not good anymore, you know? Or we, every year, we don't even get them all back, you know, we always lose one or two, and then, and then, uh.
That's fine, that's fine, but does the, does the amount of money that we make from all the programs, does the, does the fund balance slowly increase, or are we slowly decreasing every year? Do we even know?
Let me think about it for a second. Um, since I've been here, I would say it's probably stayed the same, probably fifty, fifty.
So we break even, basically. So if we decided to keep, let's say, twenty thousand dollars as a cushion, Hall Pond isn't gonna slowly chisel that down to nothing in three years. It'll typically always stay around twenty.
Hopefully, yeah. So I guess, are you saying that we could probably spend a little bit more than we think if we're gonna remain even?
Well, I'm saying that if we've got thirty-three to thirty-five in the now, and you wanna spend, let's say, ten on a groomer, that gets us basically almost down to the twenty, if, if twenty was the number we wanted to keep in there, then it would always stay at twenty, unless you had some major catastrophe.
Yeah, well, then there's the other, uh, something that I just popped in my mind right now. The, the well at the pond, or not at the pond, sorry, uh, River Road. So, so that's not working right, right now, I mean, we probably gotta dip in for that, to fix that as well.
So you're, you're gonna have something like that?
Yeah, and e- even if we set a number for what we wanna keep in there, what are you gonna do if you need something fixed, it is gonna dip us down to nineteen, you know, easy? We're probably just gonna say, yeah, do it. So, having a fixed target, I mean, having, having a fixed target for what we keep in there is a good idea, but. I'm sure there's gonna be occasions when we. Change it.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the goal is, is to make money, right? So we haven't, we haven't done that over the last couple of years. Uh, obviously, COVID had a huge. Problem with that. Uh, you know, summer camp lost. A ton of money, not, not this year, the year before I was here. It ran and I, I want to say it costs like, oh man, it's def, it was definitely over a $10,000 loss. You know, so that, stuff like that can happen. Um. We didn't lose any money on summer camp this year, which was good.
So we better, we better keep at least 10 to 15 in there just for program failures, let's call it.
Yeah.
So Alan's trying to figure out how much money he can spend. To keep a little safety net. So let's all agree on a safety net number, 10, 15, 20?
I'd say 15 is probably reasonable.
Yeah, I'm good with 15. Not gonna have a say yet.
If we're not dipping into it every year with, you know, Hall's Pond losses, if it's, if it's always basically staying even. And we maintain a, you know, regular 15. And it doesn't sound like.
How do you feel about that?
You, what? Sorry, I missed it.
How do you feel about maintaining that in your fund balance?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's fine. I mean. Ultimately, I think we could do all this stuff. On this list. It just might have to change how, how it happens. Like, for example. You know, infield groomer, we could get one for 2,000, you know, if, if we want to go that route. Uh, or we could get a, a really nice new one that, you know, we know is not gonna break down for a while. Uh.
I can give you my old lawn tractor that I used to use on the fields 20 years ago. Hasn't run in five, but you're more than welcome to it.
I, I, I can't.
Old Ford tractor?
That's a cop cadet.
You, you put a list together. Figure out what your basic fund balance is, not counting the 2K and the 1,500 and the bench and the money for the. Scoreboard and see what you got left over and put these things against it till you whittle it down to 10 or 15. See what makes the most sense. And go out and start looking for those things.
Okay, but do we?
See how the rope's gonna be more than a couple grand.
But do, do we all agree, though, that getting the infield groomer is the right decision? Regardless of how much it costs? Like, do we want to?
Not regardless of how much it costs. If it costs nine grand, yeah, but not if it's 30,000.
No, no, no. What I, what I mean is, like, whether it's 2,000, 5,000, 8,000, you know, however much it. It is, we want to go that route and get one and sort of remove it from the landscaping.
I think, oh, you'll get an ROI on it eventually. Cause you're not paying, how much do you pay the landscaper a year for that?
I don't know, but it's a, it's a hundred dollars every time it's done.
How many times does he do it?
Um.
Doesn't he leave the machine there and we use it?
What's that?
Didn't we have this conversation a while ago? Doesn't he leave the machine there? And someone uses it? And it's an honor system? I guess every time he uses it, he builds this for it or something?
Yes, that's how it is, yeah.
This is just the.
We're gonna look into buying that? Is that where you got the two grand?
Not his unit.
He did actually offer to sell, to sell us one too. But, you know.
How much?
He didn't give me a number. Cause I guess he's got two or three of them.
Okay.
Is this just for the River Road field?
Well, this would.
All baseball fields.
All baseball field.
Yeah.
But does the landscaper do all the fields or just River Road?
He does all of them. Um, but he, you know, he. The other fields don't get used as much, you know, like the River Road field, I think. Um, not, not Wellington Little League, but whatever the Little League organization is where those little. Where the Wellington kids went to go play after it folded, they play, they uh, they don't play games there, they practice there sometimes. You know, um, I don't, I don't think um the center school field gets used. The Hall School field, I'm not sure that gets used either. Uh, it's nothing that.
I think it will once baseball comes back. Um, TOB is where, TOB is where the school plays, right?
Yep.
So that's really where that machine gets used the most.
Right, that's where it would get used the most for sure, but we would use it at all the sites. You know, so I guess.
Regardless of whether they get used, we still, we certainly don't want them to turn into grass. Anyway, so we would definitely want to keep them up regardless of whether they're being used a lot.
Yeah, right. Well, that's, I mean, that's. Without, without them being used and the maintenance only being done, you know, every once in a while, that's kind of what's happening anyway. You know, they're, it's kind of filling in a little bit and um. The Little League coach that was practicing there, like he went there on a weekend and he did a lot of extra work to try and clean it up a little bit. But really, it's got, it's got to be done often, you know, to really maintain it. And this is, I was trying to express this to the uh, the finance committee, you know? I think this machine is, is necessary. And if we get it. We can do the job however many times it needs to be done and we don't have to pay a hundred dollars every single time for each field. You know?
I think it's worth getting. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, how long does it take to do the field with that piece of equipment?
I mean, I've never done it, but I'm guessing 20 minutes, probably. I mean, you're just driving it over the same area all. You just hook on this uh thing on the back and it's got a bunch of claws in it and you just drive over the same. The infield over and over again, you know?
So what do you, what do you use to pull it?
So that's what the infield groomer is. It's the machine that pulls that.
Okay.
The claw thing, yeah. So it's got, it's got three wheels on it. Uh, it's made for driving, you know, over the dirt and the grass and stuff like that.
No, it's, it sounds good. I agree with it, but you know, just curious who's gonna do it. I know you will do some and it doesn't seem like there's. Anybody really dedicated to baseball in Wellington at this point. You know, if you had a, a Little League in town, then you'd have a group of volunteers doing it, but. It's good to have as long as it's getting used and the fields are being maintained.
Okay.
Without anybody dedicated to do it, is it gonna get done?
I, I think the complaint's been in the last couple of years that it doesn't get done often enough. We don't have enough money in our budget to have it done more often. So the fields aren't ready for especially the middle school kids when they're ready to play a game.
Yeah, and then obviously that was part of the, the issue um that we had during the last baseball season was. You know, people were arguing like, why can't, why can't the machine be used before our game? You know, you're, we all remember that, right? So it wouldn't even be an issue, you know? It would just be like, all right, I'll, they're gonna play, the Hall School team's gonna come play at 3 o'clock. I'll hop on, boom, done. Whenever Anthony's baseball league is gonna come, he'll run it before his game, you know? Cause that, that is the site where it would be used most, you know, the other ones could just be whenever we get around to it, you know? Uh, I'll get the, get a trailer and get it over. To the other site and do it just to maintain it.
And where would we store it?
See what you can find. Where would we store it? I would put it right at the TOB shed.
It's not very big then.
Well, eh, so the landscaper puts his in there in the winter. Or we put it in there for him for the winter. So it fits, because. The, the doors open up, well, it's like double doors, they can open them up and put it in there. So there's enough room to, to store it in there. So it sounds like, it sounds like we think this is a good idea. We don't know the price, though. We should kind of see how everything falls in line to determine. How much to spend on it, is that?
If you can buy a used one for $2,000 and the new one is nine, it gives you $7,000 of wiggle room to repair anything that breaks on it. I mean, how much could a new motor cost even if you had to buy a motor for the thing? Couldn't be seven grand.
I don't know, but you'd have to put some, pay somebody to put it in too, right?
Yeah, it'd still be a lot cheaper than seven grand.
Yeah. Why don't you look around and see if there's something in the middle that's used, that's not as used up as something that's two grand?
Okay. Okay. Um, so. At the last meeting, I talked about the fence at River Road that needs work. I asked Donna about it and she believes that that entire fence was put in for around $6,000. Um. So my question was gonna be. It definitely, there's parts that have to be replaced for sure, because there's safety concerns with those. Do we want to go like all in and? Since it's such an extensive job to replace parts of the fence, do we want to go? All right, this is the time where we're gonna try and look to fix everything that's wrong with the fence, or do we just want to do a patchwork job? Or do we want to look into the possibility of maybe changing the fence and going with like a metal guard rail or something?
What fences is that?
What's that, Sue?
What fence are we talking about?
The fence at River Road that separates the parking lot from the walking track.
The wooden, the wooden guard rail. That low wooden guard rail that you can see.
Yeah. So there's.
There's more aesthetic than safety, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it does both, you know, keeps, keeps.
It keeps cars off the field.
Yeah.
It's restrictive, yeah, I agree.
The, the thing is, is there's some of them that are rotted, right? And then there's some of them that are cracked and they're split and they're going to rot, you know, so it's like. Could we, could we, you know, not get away with not replacing them for right now, but then, you know, two more years go, go by and now all of a sudden they do need to be replaced. So how, how extensive do you think this repair should be?
Well, it's a question of how much to repair. What would it cost to get lumber to repair it?
Yeah, most of.
The. It has to be, I don't, I don't know the answer to the question. But it can't be, it's not a job that Public Works can do because it's a specific type of fence. So the fence company has to come in and pull out. Like, if they want to repair one beam in the middle of the fence. They have to come in and they have to remove the whole fence and replace that one beam and then put the fence back in. That's the way that the fence is designed.
No way.
Yeah, you can't. That's, that's what I was told. I, Troy said that and I asked Carl about it as well. Carl said the same thing.
That's.
I, I go.
Those, those.
I've gone down there quite a bit. You know, I go down there quite a bit lately, walking our dog and um I've looked at that fence a lot. And I have the same conclusion. I see no way that you can replace the piece in the middle without taking the whole thing apart. I, and it's. You know, it's a pretty, it looks, it's a nice looking um guard rail or whatever you want to call it, but um. It is, I, I don't see how you could, how you could do it otherwise.
We should be able to take at least half of it down, right? You shouldn't have to take both halves. If you go, if you're replacing the middle post, take the left half of the right half down. You should be able to do that way.
Well, no, it's broken into sections because there are gaps in it. So there's probably one. There's probably three or four sections where you can, you know. Where it's, where there's a gap, in other words, for cars or for people to walk through. So you don't have to take the entirety of it down. But you'd have to take, let's say, 25% of the whole fence down to replace one middle, you know, um post or whatever.
To change the be, to change one of those beams, there's two ways to do it. The holes in those posts are probably, most likely they're through holes. There's a hole all the way through that post. So you cut the beam out, you, you cut a beam so you, you shove one end in, the other end. It just clears it and you slide it halfway each way and you pin it. Or, or you can pull out, if you want to change one piece, you pull one post out. And you change both beams on each side. And as you put. As the hole is open and you drop the new, the old post back in, the two new beams get slid into the hole and then it drops down in. There's two ways to do it.
Yep.
You don't have to pull the whole fence out. There's no way you'd have to pull.
Yeah, I agree with you. Mike, I agree with you. I mean, it takes someone who knows what they're doing and that's not me, so.
There's no, unless a fence company is really not busy and they want to make a lot of money. They're gonna come in and fix that thing in like.
Yep.
Two hours.
So you don't, so you don't think it's as big as a job as previously thought?
No.
Nope.
Okay, but there, there are definitely a significant amount of posts and boards that need to be replaced, though. You know, and.
They should be treated. They shouldn't be rotting. They're supposed to be pressure treated. I don't know why they're rotting.
Some of them are definitely rotting, Mike. There's a couple, not the post, but the, the length of them, whatever you want to call it, are. Rotted, very rotted. But then you have some posts that are rotted because, you know, they're, they're cut. And then the moisture goes straight down into them and they rot.
Tops were wicking the water in.
Right, right. Yeah, so I think it could be repaired. I don't think it's a total replacement then.
Well, the problem is if they're all gonna start to rot, then you know. You're constantly changing parts, but a whole new fence is gonna be expensive.
Can they put a plastic cap on the posts, Mike?
There might be a company that makes plastic or copper or.
Just to keep them from wicking all that water down.
That would be ideal. That is, that is one solution to keep the post from rotting. It's, I, I still say they should be pressure treated and they shouldn't be doing that. They're thick, so they probably didn't get pressure treated all the way to the center, but still, there should be some. Some protection there.
So do we want to, do we want to replace the, the things that need to be replaced on it and not, you know, not change the fence? Or?
I think repair, not replace the fence.
Okay. Yeah, for now.
How many companies are out there? Have you gotten proposals from other companies or just one company?
I haven't gotten any proposals yet, because I wanted to, I wanted to figure out what we were doing first before I talked to them. So the. The number of the company that um put it in, they, it's like right on one of the posts, so I'm just gonna call that number and.
But they're not the people that told you, you gotta pull the whole fence out to replace a beam, are they?
No, they didn't tell me that.
Yeah, you said, you asked, tell them on the phone, you got, you got a couple of horizontal beams that you need changed. Can they do it? I guarantee you, there's a way they can do it.
Okay. Um, so. I guess the, should we repair all of like? Even the ones that are starting to go? Should we, should we get rid of them too and just make the whole thing good across the board? That's the thing that worries me about this kind, this kind of stuff, you know, it's like, we could go through right now and we, we. Replace 30% of them and then next year, okay, now we, now there's five more that need to get replaced just over the course of a year, you know, the stuff breaks down over time, it's.
I would hope that the fence company that installed it would give you an honest put as to what's good and what's bad and what needs to be replaced.
Okay, so ask, ask them, ask the company.
Let's start there.
Yeah, get a quote from them. Maybe two quotes would be good. Let's start with the company that put it in.
All right. Um. The scoreboard. So this was the other, this was the other really large um. Actually, the largest probably uh in terms of how much it costs for a scoreboard. Um. These things can range from. These things can range from like eight grand to twenty, you know, it's. But the twenty grand one is, you know, like a MLB one that has, you know. Innings across the board, strikes, balls, everything like that. Obviously, we're not gonna do that. Um.
Why not get the exact same one you got at River Road?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know wh- where that came from. I guess I could try and find out.
Get something like it.
Yeah, so. I don't, do you, does anyone know how that one operates at River Road? Like, is, how do they flip the?
Radio frequency controller.
Okay, I, I assumed that's what it was. Do you know who has the controller?
Hopefully it's in that shed down there, the, the baseball shed.
The shed that I can't get into.
Yeah.
Why can't you get into it?
Cause nobody knows the code. The code, two people thought they knew the code. Ah, Joe, we tried to get in. You came down there. We put it, the codes in and we couldn't get in.
Is it a, um, number code?
It's a number code, yeah.
I did write it one time up on, 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 on the board on top. I think it's seventeen eighty-seven, if I remember right. I wrote it, I wrote it on the. Eve of the building.
He's something seventeen seventy-six, something like.
It was seventeen something, yeah.
So I, I have.
Is it, is it a combo, a combo lock?
Yeah, it's a four digit.
Four digit, yeah, it's, it's sev- I have a, let me see.
So I think it was actually, uh. Mike I Tambo that also, uh, looked into it. And he got a, he got a number. I don't, I don't really know if we, I should say the number over the meeting, cause I don't, you know, in the event that. You know, it is the right thing. I don't want people going in there, but.
Alright, yeah, I hear you.
It didn't work. No one I tried it, we couldn't get the, we, we couldn't get it to work.
Uh, who was the, who, Steve, who was the president of Little League there? I played basketball with him. Pat, Pat Ryan.
Pat Ryan, yep, yep.
You may know it.
Oh, I have it. I do have it. I have it. I'll, I'll text it to you.
Okay.
Alright, I have two numbers. So let's see if it works.
Two numbers and a bolt cutter.
Yep, exactly.
Make it easy.
Alright, so get something similar to that. Uh, here's the, here's the, um, the expertise part of the question. How much is it to install something like that? Cause that's gotta be factored in as well.
Depends on where you put it. We talked about putting it as close to the refreshment stand where there's power as possible. This is town office building, right?
Yep.
So the closer it is to that, the less the trench is. Will the town, uh, will the townies, will the public works guys cut you a trench?
I don't know.
And dig two holes.
I can ask them. I don't know. But, I mean, so if, let's say they won't. They won't do that, uh. Do we hire a company to put it in?
Trench is twenty, twenty to twenty-five bucks a foot. And the pipe and wire is probably about. Twenty-five dollars a foot. So figure fifty bucks a foot for pipe, wire and trench. And Mike, you gotta dig two. Mike put the last one in. I remember dragging it over to. River Road. Took it off your truck, I think, Mike, didn't we?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. We put it up. We put it up standing on my.
We, we voiced it.
Did we, did we use your lift or were we standing on my rack? Think, I think we were standing on.
Off a truck.
I thought we were standing on. Rack on my truck with some planks up there.
Yeah, we, we did it the good old fashioned, don't worry about OSHA way.
Exactly.
Where, do you remember where you got it from?
Uh, no.
Maureen bought it.
Maureen bought it somewhere, probably maybe Playtime.
There's gotta be a, a label on the back of that scoreboard that's got the manufacturer's name, model number and address.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You got an idea. I'll check the back of it.
Al, Alan, don't you still get those magazines with all the, um, equipment for sale?
I do. They don't usually have big, big things like that and, um, it's, it's usually just small.
That scoreboard was easy to find. You can find that easily, I think. I just, if I saw, you could just find the same one. It looks, they, they sell those.
I don't think that scoreboard was more than five grand. With the controller.
Yeah.
So I think for thirteen grand, you can easily get it installed.
I, and I think that one does do balls and strikes.
What's that?
I think that scoreboard does do balls and strikes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah. That's a pretty good one.
Uh, so I guess the last thing that I have on my list here is the well. Uh, briefly talked about that before. Do we, do we want to get that fixed? I mean, it seems.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to.
If we have it, it should, it should be working, uh, you know.
Is it the pump or the tank?
I think the pump is shot. Cause we're sending power to it.
Why would it, why would it die if it's not being used?
Lightning hit?
Oh. Yeah.
Could be anything.
I lost one.
I lost ours here once and the second time was because. When Stevens put it back in, they popped, they didn't make a good crimp on the wire. And it came apart and they were really honest about it and they fixed it. Charged me for the time, but they fixed it. Uh, Stevens put all that in, right?
Oh, yeah.
Did that, Alan, was it Stevens?
Oh, I don't know. That was before my time.
Mike.
Yeah, it was Stevens.
Call, call Stevens. Tell them what's wrong. Where the disconnect is in there. Maybe before spring, they could get out and take a look.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we, we wanted to go forward with this, um.
You got to.
Okay.
You need a new pump, it's probably, what do you think, Mike? For a new pump, five grand?
I would say tops, yeah.
Yeah, I just paid three for.
Yeah, for, for your house, it's twenty-five, twenty-eight. So it's. Maybe, I, was it a three quarter? I thought it was three quarter horse.
Be a little beefy for the distance from the tank. It's a long way from the tank.
Maybe it's one horse.
Not sure, but I think the way to approach that is you just call Stevens and ask him. To come and take a look at it and they're gonna say, yep, bad pump. Four grand. That's that.
They'll have records of what they put in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's something I could do real quick. I mean, I might even be able to get that done this week. Call them up and.
Do that sooner than later.
Yeah.
Before they get busy.
Um, okay, I think that's, that's everything that I have. Um, is there anything that you guys, they can think of that? You think we might need to do? Improvements.
Aren't you thinking about some kind of hot dog cooker or something for the refreshment stand?
Uh, that was, um, that was Jenny.
She'll take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay. A refrigerator? Were you talking about a refrigerator?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, one of the refrig- there's two refrigerators at the River Road concession stand and one of them is totally dead. Um. I mean, I guess you could ask, do you need two? I don't know, but, but that's what was in there before.
I think there was two separate, Maureen had her separate from somebody else who was going out of there. So they kept it. Oh, it was a Little League. Little League and, and Ref. Each had their own, so they wouldn't commingle the products, but if, if Little League's not working out of that field, they don't really need.
Yeah, kinda makes sense to hold off until there is a Little League officially using the field again. You don't need it for practices.
People have donated that refrigerator, haven't they?
Probably.
Out of grandma's basement.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that then. There's no, I guess there's no reason to have to. Any other idea? Oh, the. Um. The trailer? Trailer to move around the, uh, grooming machine?
Well. Even a small trailer is gonna be a few grand.
A small trailer is a few grand?
I would think so. You're not gonna get a ten-foot garden trailer for it, are you? How big is the thing?
That big.
You gotta know the ways, you gotta know the ways first before you inspect a trailer, I guess.
It'd be too much though. Hey, Steve, can't be more than.
I don't know.
Six hundred pounds?
Honestly, it's about the size of a, a regular lawn tractor. It's not as high, but just the size in general, you know. Though the rear tires are a little, uh. I didn't know that a trailer was gonna cost a couple thousand dollars, so.
Public Works doesn't have a small one?
I mean, they, they probably do, but. You know, the thing is, is whenever I have to go borrow something from them, I have to go drive over there and get it and bring it back and then bring it back again when I'm done, you know, it just.
Where would you store it? Yeah.
Somewhere there, yeah. Actually, I haven't really thought about that.
What do you think? Just live outside at the town office building.
Yeah, you could probably chain it. Put a chain and lock, should be safe.
Yeah.
Might lose the tires off it, but.
Well, I guess that's all that I got. Any ideas? Or is this enough? Is this enough stuff?
That's pretty good.
Sounds good, Alan.
I've got a ten-foot garden trailer we moved generators with. I mean, if I could help you in a pinch, move the thing. Until you get a trailer.
Okay. Alright, well, I mean, that's, I, that was, that was helpful, you know, I just. Sounds like I can really go ahead and.
And I would start with the well, Alan. Right? I would start with the well.
Right.
I shall. So the, um, I guess I'll just, I'll move it to the next thing, cause I remember what I put on the agenda. I was go- going to tell you guys about what I talked about with Carl. I met with him. Last Thursday. We were there for like two and a half hours. We were just walking the site. And, um, we were going through all of the extra, you know, problems that. Weren't necessarily marked initially on, on our plan for there. Uh, Carl went there a number of times in rainstorms and right after rainstorms. And he found two other areas that like really need addressing on the, the warning track. Um, one of them is right behind the dugout. Not the dugout, sorry, um. Yeah, dugout. Um, it also, the water pools up in there, but I told them. You know, we, we can't fix every single thing, you know? So people aren't gonna be playing baseball in, in, you know. Conditions like that anyway, so. But he said, he said he was gonna add, um. He said he was gonna add, uh. Another, another drain or something at that specific spot to get the water out of there. Um. The. He was talking about, um, putting drains in. That link up to like curtain drains and stuff, so he wants to put in. Um, like concrete. So. It can't be damaged by the lawnmower. You know, that, that sort of stuff. Um, he's also going to. Write in to the RFP to swap out all those boxes. Uh, the ones that need to get replaced. I showed him the one that's across the parking lot. Um. I don't know if you guys even know about that one. So it's. It's, um. In that section of woods between, you know, uh, thirty-two and the parking lot. There's a, there's another one of those, um, electrical and water. I don't even know, what are they called, boxes?
It's a, it's, that, that box is, it's cut into that two-inch pipe. That was bringing, we were gonna use for, there's two two-inch pipes that come from the telephone pole out on the other side of the parking lot. And we cut into that so that we could get those lights on the other side. That's how those lights are fed.
Okay. So yeah, those, those boxes are. Destroyed. The, but he's gonna put it, he's gonna put it in there to have all that stuff replaced. Uh, as part of the project, you know? And I was even saying, you know, is there any way we could change, change the boxes maybe and make them, you know, more durable? I, I don't know. He's, he's gonna look.
Concrete ones.
Yeah.
Those are plastic. They make them out of concrete, like cast, not real concrete. What is that called, Mike? It's not real concrete. It's like fiberglass and concrete kinda mixed. They're, they're more durable. But they're ten times the price.
Yeah. So he's, he's gonna look into all that and. Basically where we left it was, he's gonna make all those additions that we talked about. And, um. He's gonna have the blueprint done. He had a, a version of the blueprint done, but he wanted to walk it with me and. Talk about all the extra little things that we were discussing. So he's gonna put that on the blueprint. And once that is done, then we can go forward officially with the next step, which is to write it all up. This is what we need and then send it out.
The right term for those boxes is hand hole.
Hand hole.
Hand hole. It's not a manhole, it's a handhole.
Awkward name.
I didn't make it up.
Depends on whether you're, you're in prison or not.
How was the ARPA meeting, Stu?
It was good.
Yeah.
Good meeting today. You wanna hear about it, Joe?
Sure.
I could wait. There's a. ARPA, we met today at one thirty. The total allocation for the prep, for the, uh. For the monies was one point seven three five. As the money started to run out, we voted to put aside fifty grand. Or, uh. Contingency. The money is. Just about spent. There were some library projects on hold that we tabled today because. We're just not clear on what the need is for that. So there's two things that were approved today. One strategic economic plan was approved for forty thousand dollars. Um. And. That already went to a town, a town, uh. A Zoom vote weeks ago. So that's been forwarded to the Economic Development Commission. To, to proceed with that, put together an RFP and get. Businesses involved with. Where do we go from here as a town? I'm not sure that's ever been done in Arlington. The other thing that was re. Was proposed was. A town-wide facility assessment, physical plant. Facility assessment for fifty thousand dollars. That will go in front of the town on March sixth. At five thirty. For comments. And depending on those comments, the ARPA committee will move forward or not move forward. That leaves beside the fifty thousand contingency about fifteen thousand dollars left. Um. And that's where we're at.
Sounds like just enough for a groomer.
Nice one. But our money has been, uh, accepted and we will get paid, right?
Our money is, our project is in the till, ready to go. Gotta figure out where we go from here.
Remember off the top of your head what that number is?
The River Road project? Two, two twenty.
What was that number?
Two twenty.
Two twenty?
It was what, it was one ninety-six and the committee added another twenty to. For Auburns. So whatever that is, it's about two twenty.
It's good. It's good.
It's, it's a good number, but.
Goes quick.
There's a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed.
That's okay. All good. We'll be paying for it till we're dead in taxes and then some. Okay.
I think that was, that's all I put on.
Okay. So are we ready to adjourn? Bill Billyak, did you, uh, move to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
He moved to adjourn. Second?
Uh, a second.
Et te. Fellas, it is eight oh nine PM.
A good one.
Stu, thanks for the update.
Whatever.
Take care, fellas.